Okay, good evening, welcome. This is the October 17th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now called to order. I'm Emily Brophy, Vice Chair of the Board. I'm filling in for our new Chair, Scott Halupka. We will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the Board that are present. Can you hear your name? Please say aye. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halupka. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Perlo.
Aye.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren. And Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, if you could all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, please remember to unmute your microphones before you begin speaking. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes.
Great. In the October 10th email, you received draft minutes from the September 5th meeting, as everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the September 5th meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First on the agenda this evening, we have a presentation by Ms. Sally Nash of the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections on updates to both the Baltimore County Landscape and Open Space manuals. After the introduction, I will call for two separate motions to set public hearings on the manuals. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Nash.
Hello, how is everyone?
Good evening.
My name is Sally Nash. I'm the Deputy Director in Permits, Approvals, and Inspections. I have been here in front of you before to bring updated manuals. We did the Development Management and Plans Review Manual and the Zoning Policy Manual. We are back today to bring you the Landscape Manual and the Open Space Manual. Next slide. These are two manuals that, like the other ones, have not been updated since 2000. Next slide. We worked since early this year with our regulatory partners in Department of Planning, Recreation and Parks, and the Environmental and Sustainability Department to update these manuals, to make them clearer and more concise, and to bring them into alliance with current laws that have passed in the last 24 years. Since July, we've also been working with a group of six landscape architects. We met twice a week, or, sorry, we met every two weeks to go through the manuals, and we've updated the graphics and the appendices to make it easier for landscape architects countywide to be able to use these manuals. Next slide. I will be presenting more details on the changes on November 7th. For your view, you have four manuals in front of you. In each one, for the Landscape Manual and the Open Space Manual, you have one manual that shows the changes that the committee has made in red. New text is in uppercase, and deletions are bracketed. There's also a clean version of each manual, and those, that just shows the manuals as we are proposing that they will read, if adopted by you and County Council. Are there any questions for me before I return on November 7th? Yes.
So, the manuals, are they only refined for design or also for content?
We did touch on both content and design. We did not make radical changes in these manuals, but there were, for example, new conditions we added to Landscape Manual for solar facilities. That one had no standards, so we looked at similar uses and did determine what would be the appropriate standard for landscaping on those kinds of uses. We also updated some of the details, but for the most part, they've stayed the same, just clearer and more up-to-date. But you'll see in there as you go through if we removed anything. We didn't, we didn't change too many of the standards, though, but we edited a lot of the introduction and explanatory text.
And, and so Baltimore County, you know, in light of the recent hurricanes, you know, and the unexpected event in Nashville, North Carolina, I understand that Baltimore County established a climate action plan in 2021. Is that referred to in the Open Space Plan in any way?
Not in Open Space, but in Landscape, we did add language about sustainability, especially, that came from our Environmental and Protection Department. There was also a lot of language added about edible landscaping and how to make, how to make a more functional landscape in, for different conditions.
So, and I apologize for going on like this, but in 2015, Baltimore County purchased 255 acres to create Granite Park, which is virtually 98% forested, and was paid for partially with open space funds. So, is the preservation of those spaces addressed in the Open Space Manual?
So, the Open Space Manual is formerly called Local Open Space. We've changed it to be called Residential Open Space, because this is different than Open Space Program through the state. This is our, a local Baltimore County program for residential projects to make sure that they provide adequate space for recreational use. So, it's a little different, and so we, that's what we focus on in the Residential Open Space Manual.
Okay. Do we, what, what manual is, are the passive parks addressed in?
There's a long-range parks document. They've come to you, I remember they came to you a couple of years ago, they come to you every now and then, we reference that document in there. That's done exclusively by the Department of Recreation and Parks.
Thank you.
They are our partners with us in these manuals, but we have a lot of regulatory authority with both of these manuals.
Thank you.
Does any other board member have questions or comments for Ms. Nash? No? Okay. If there's, yes. Director Lafferty?
I think it's important to note, sort of distinction that Ms. Nash just pointed out to Ms. Wilson's question. This is not about programming open space in Recreation and Parks. This is really a requirement in the code for the provision of open space to serve residences, residential areas once they've been developed. And the other comment that she made was, these manuals have not been updated in 24 years, so there've been a few changes in the codes and the regulations that are now embedded in the new, in the new manual, not necessarily radical, but just complying with current law and standards.
Thank you, Director Lafferty. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If there are no more, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing for both manuals. First, we're going to start with the Landscape Manual.
Be it moved that a, be it moved that a public hearing on the Baltimore County Landscape Manual update be set for Thursday, November 7th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. Next, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the Open Space Manual.
Be it moved that a public hearing on the Baltimore County Open Space Manual update be set for Thursday, November 7th, 2024, immediately following the conclusion of the public hearing on the Baltimore County Landscape Manual.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. So, both public hearings will be in-person on November 7th. The Board is tentatively scheduled to vote on the matter immediately following the Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on the major actions of the September 12th and October 10th Landmarks Preservation Commission meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At their September 12th, 2024 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue five certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Mond property located at 1554 South Rolling Road and Relay. The Hoing property, Planner's Paradise, located at 2316 Baron Schmidt Road in Essex. The Beverly property located at 16202 Corbett Village Lane in Moncton. The Mitchell property located at 2101 Mount Carmel Road in Parkton. And the Malgram property located at 708 West Clydeton Road in Sudbrook Park. At their October 10th, 2024 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue four certificates of appropriateness for the following properties. The Black Clark property located at 110 Dunkirk Road in Towson. The O'Connor property located at 210 Malinkton Avenue in Lutherville. The Co-Pen Wang Trustee property located at 10899 York Road in Cockeysville. And the Smith property located at 502 Upland Road in Sudbrook Park. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on the legislation recently passed by the County, by the County Council following our last meeting.
Thank you. Bill 6324, Tax on Vacant Structures, for the purpose of establishing a tax on vacant structures, describing the conditions under which a vacant structure tax may be imposed, establishing how revenue from vacant structure taxes should be allocated, and generally relating to taxes, property taxes, and vacant structures. Bill 6824, Rental Housing Licenses, Short-Term Rental License, for the purpose of establishing a short-term rental license, defining certain terms, prohibiting certain activity related to the operation of a short-term rental without a license, requiring the county to issue or renew a license for a short-term rental that meets certain, certain requirements, provides certain information, and pay a fee, prohibiting such issuance or renewal under certain circumstances, permitting the county to acquire certain inspections as a precondition of license issuance or renewal, establishing certain limitations on the number of guests for a short-term rental based on certain criteria and the length of time a short-term rental may be rented, permitting the county to adopt regulations to carry out the provisions of this act, and generally relating to rental housing licenses and short-term rentals. Bill 6924, Zoning Regulations, Uses permitted in the Residential Office, R-O Zone, uses in the Pikesville Design Review Area, for the purpose of permitting certain by right and special exception uses in the R-O Zone and the Pikesville Design Review Area along Church Lane, and generally relating to uses in the R-O Zone. Bill 7124, Boards, Commissions, Panels, and Foundations, Standardization of Member Compensation and Expense Reimbursement, for the purpose of standardizing the compensation and expense reimbursement rules for certain members of certain boards, commissions, committees, panels, and foundations, permitting such members to receive certain reimbursements for expenses necessarily incurred under certain circumstances, if provided for in the county operating budget, consolidating existing authority to compensate certain members into a single section, and repealing certain duplicative sections or subsections, and generally relating to the compensation and expense reimbursement for members of boards, commissions, committees, panels, and foundations. Bill 7424, Zoning Regulations, Uses permitted in the Manufacturing Light M-L Zone Schools, for the purpose of expanding the permitted uses of schools, including business or trade schools, in the M-L Zone as a transportation, storage, or quasi-public use or utility, and generally relating to the M-L Zone and schools. Resolution 4024, Applications and Ranking, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Trust Foundation, Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 Agricultural Easement Cycle. A resolution to approve certain applications for the sale of development rights, easements on properties located on farms that meet the state criteria for application in accordance with the agricultural article, Section 2-509 of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The ranking of the applicants as provided by the county executive and the Department of Planning, with recommendation of the Baltimore County Agricultural Land Preservation Advisory Board, is provided within the resolution. Bill 4124, Approval Purchase of Development Rights Easements, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, Fiscal Year 24 Cycle. A resolution to approve the county's contribution towards the purchase of certain development rights easements on properties in accordance with Title II Subtitle V Agricultural Code, Annotated Code of Maryland, and Article 24 Land Preservation Baltimore, of the Baltimore County Code. And finally, Resolution 4224, Application to the State of Maryland, Redesignation of the Chesapeake Enterprise Zone. A resolution in support of the application to the State of Maryland for the redesignation of the Chesapeake Enterprise Zone with modified boundaries totaling approximately 5,790 acres. In December 1995, the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development approved Baltimore County's request for designation of approximately 2,400 acres in the southeastern part of Baltimore County as the North Point Enterprise Zone. Designation of this area as an enterprise zone has resulted in increased business investment and the addition of new jobs in southeastern Baltimore County. Redesignation of the qualifying area as an enterprise zone would allow property owners and businesses currently located or considering a location within the proposed boundary to qualify for tax credits, making the area more competitive with similar areas in the region. The Chesapeake Enterprise Zone designation, which was most recently renewed for approval in 2015, will expire in June 2025. Baltimore County is supportive of the application to redesignate eligible portions of the Chesapeake Enterprise Zone, and the County Council supports and gives its consent for the application for redesignation, as depicted on the map attached to the resolution, and that concludes the report.
Nice job, Ms. Bensley. That was a lot. So, that is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for the Citizen Input Meeting on the Capital Improvement Program, beginning at 5:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh, yes. Mr. Howard? Unmute yourself, please.
I'd like to take a moment, if I can, and thank my fellow members of the Planning Board for serving along with me, some short-term, some long-term, Cathy, a long-term. I would like to thank Director Lafferty, just left us for a minute, so let him know that I did comment, but his staff, all of you that provide for us for 14 years on this Board, I would like to thank you extremely much for the effort that you have put in to make us prepared to discuss and vote on these various matters that affect the county that I've lived in for my 71 whole years. I love my county, I've spent my entire life here. I believe that what we do here is very important to direct our growth and redevelopment of our county, as we have gotten to be an old county. I'm going to tender my resignation to Director Lafferty in a few moments, but I wanted to be able to thank you all very, very much for all the effort that you've put for us over the years at that point. I'm not sure I will enjoy sitting over there and being the, you know, the people that complain sometimes, but that's where I'll be if I have something to say. But thank you all very much for all your effort. Director Lafferty, I was just thanking the Board and you for your team. I'm going to give you my resignation from this Board at the conclusion of this meeting, but wanted to thank everybody here very much for the work that your team always does.
Well, Mr. Perlo, thank you for your many, many years of volunteer service. You know, we may not have always agreed, but you always sort of pushed the points in a very professional manner that really helped us all think a little differently about Matt, the matters of team before the Board. Your service is not unnoticed, and I think you serve your community and the county very well. Thank you for doing that. We appreciate your willingness to step aside at this point, so there's an opportunity for another appointment, but thank you again for your service.
You all, thanks. Thank you, Emily.
Mr. Howard, we appreciate that. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will reconvene at 5:00 p.m. Thank you. Ten minutes.
God, it's like that game, what is the story?
I know. Dig it crowded. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started, please.
Gavel them in.
Want me to gavel them in? I know. All right, everyone, if you could settle down, please. Thank you. We're gonna get started on time, as we do have several speakers sign up to speak tonight. So, I'd like to welcome everyone. This is the Citizen Input Meeting for the Fiscal Year 2026 to 2031 Capital Budget and Program, and we are now called to order. My name is Emily Brophy, and I am the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. We'll begin the hearing tonight with a roll call to account for the Board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye, and please remember to unmute your microphones. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Mr. Heckman. Aye.
Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halupka.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Perlo. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren. And Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. So, tonight, the Planning Board will conduct this public hearing in order to allow county citizens, businesses, and community groups an opportunity to express their concerns related to the capital program. The comments submitted to the Board and generated at tonight's meeting will be considered by the Board and county agencies as the process proceeds and capital budget requests are formulated. So, I'm going to basically start with each agency representative that is sitting up front here this evening. If you will please take a moment to stand up and introduce yourself to the group.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. My name is Colonel Joe Conger, and I'm with the Police Department.
Good evening, Scott Everett, Acting Fire Chief, Fire Department.
Good evening, Bob Smith, Director of Recreation and Parks.
Good evening, Chris Martin, Director of Office of Information Technology.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Baltimore County Public Library. The name is Sonia Alcantara Antoine.
Good evening, Michelle Mills, Deputy Director, Department of Aging.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deborah Shendle, and I represent OBF, and I'm the Chief of Property Management.
Good evening, Lauren Buckler, Acting Director for Public Works and Transportation.
Good evening, my name's Leslie Lizary. I'm with Baltimore County Public Schools. I'm the Director of Facilities Construction and Improvement.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brady Locker. I'm the Deputy Director of Environmental Protection and Sustainability.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? I did want to take a moment to acknowledge as well, we do have Councilman Izzy Patoka here in the room as well. Thank you for being here. Okay. The Capital Improvement Program is a multi-year planning program of capital expenditures needed to replace or expand the county's public infrastructure. It is a six-year plan that is updated each year. The capital improvement process is laid out by the county code. The first step is the Citizen Input Meeting, which we are here for tonight. Following the Citizen Input Meeting, the agencies that have a capital budget will formulate their requests for the coming budget. The Budget Office then forwards the requests to the Planning Board. The Planning Board reviews the program, formulates its recommendations, and sends them back to the Budget Office. When the upcoming fiscal year is one where a referendum will be held, the Planning Board also forwards its recommendations for the borrowing amounts. The Board begins the capital improvement process with the Citizen Input Meeting. Directors from each of the agencies that have a capital budget are here in attendance, which we just heard from. Citizens are invited to speak before the Board and agency heads to express their opinions on specific capital projects and needs. Having the Citizen Input Meeting at the beginning of the process allows the agencies and the Board to consider citizen requests before they formulate their recommendations for the capital improvement process. The Planning Department will distribute the CIP to the Board in January. At that time, all requesting agencies will come before the Planning Board to present their capital project requests. A Planning Board Subcommittee is formed to consider the requests and make recommendations to the full Board. The Subcommittee presents its recommendations to the full Planning Board in early March for a vote. After approval by the Planning Board, the Director of Planning submits the Board's recommendations to the Director of Budget and Finance. So, now that we have the background done, this evening, we have Mr. Chris Weaver and Ms. Jennifer Meacham of the Department of Planning here to answer any specific questions as we move forward. Does the Board have any questions at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll now call upon those of you who have completed the sign-in sheet located in the Jefferson Building Lobby to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order that you are registered. Speakers, please remember to limit your comments to two minutes to speak. Please provide your name and the organization you represent, if applicable, and Ms. Bensley will be calling you in the order you signed up. Ms. Bensley, can you tell us who the first speaker is?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Sue Betzel.
Welcome, Ms. Betzel.
I'm Sue Betzel. I'm President of the Hereford Senior Center Council, and I'm here to say we're very pleased so far with Hereford Senior Center. We now have a property, and we have a well. So, we're interested in making sure that the next funds are available for the next phase of our new building. But for the information, a lot of you may not know the background of Hereford Senior Center, and I'd just like to spend a little bit, few minutes on that. We, it started in 1979 out of Mount Carmel Church. It was Mount Carmel, Pretty Boy Senior Center. It went only one day a week. The, they rented space at the church. And in 2015, we moved to Hereford at Summit Manor, which is the building behind the Hereford Fire Hall. And we rent space. We're only open two days a week. We are the only senior center in this county that does not have its own building. So, this presents a problem, because we cannot have a lot of activities or programs, because we don't have the space. And as in Hereford now, sometimes, like today, we had to tear down, because they were renting the space over the weekend for other people. And then we have to set it back up on Tuesday morning. So, we do have about 216 members right now. We have people joining all the time, because people hear about what we are doing. So, I, I thank you for the time.
So much.
Next up, we have Chaz Erzrein.
Welcome, Mr. Erzrein.
My name is Chaz Erzrein. I'm the President of the Dunbar and Stevenson Civic Improvement Association, along with the Law Meadow Association. We would like to make sure that you are aware of the pedestrian safety issues impacting Pikesville residents living on the Stevenson Road-Carter and ask that that be addressed. We are supported in our quest by the Pikesville Community Corporation, which encompasses over 14 community associations surrounding Pikesville and represents over 2,500 residents. We are also supported by Pratt Action Committee, chartered with coordinating goals listed in the Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan. The plan was developed by a group of volunteers, community activists, business owners, representatives of local organizations, under the auspices of the Baltimore County Planning Department. We would like to request funding for additional crosswalks along Stevenson and Carter, which will help improve the economic viability of Pikesville commercial area by allowing pedestrians within and near the Dunbar and Stevenson Law Meadow communities to safely walk to businesses in Pikesville, such as Giant Foods, Stables, banks and restaurants, as well as county amenities, such as the Baltimore County Library and Pikesville Senior Center. Over the past few years, there's been a huge influx of younger families moving into the area encompassing Law Meadow, Dunbar and Stevenson, and Dunbar and Heights neighborhoods. We celebrate the changes as is possible, as is positive for the health of our neighbors and brings new participants to the Pikesville economic revitalization. This increase in population also brings more adults and children spending time outside healthier activities like walking, running, biking, which is essential, which, which is evident on weekends. We realize that the county is well aware of the safety issues of greater Pikesville community. Recently, crosswalks replaced in multiple locations on Smith Avenue and Greenspring Avenue to address these concerns. We would like to see the pedestrian safety issues. We would like to see the pedestrian safety issues in our area similarly addressed with daylight hours getting shorter, pedestrian safety becomes even more critically addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Erzren. Appreciate it. If you want to leave any of your additional notes with Ms. Benzley right there, she'll take it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Darryl McDavid.
Welcome, Mr. McDavid.
Good evening. My name is Darryl McDavid. I'm the Executive Director for the Epicenter. On behalf of our Board of Directors and staff and volunteers and the new friends in Parkville that we're getting to meet, we just want to say thanks for allowing us to submit a proposal, which I believe you get at the end of this meeting. We are, we have a building now in Parkville. We've been in Harford County for 11 years. We have three locations out there. We have the VFW building on Harford Road in Parkville. It was the Colony Theater. We are bringing our community center nonprofit to it. And so after 11 years in Harford County, three locations serving around 13,000 neighbors, specifically families facing poverty, we're taking the jump to come across the county line and enter Baltimore. So again, thanks for letting us pursue this with you all and the funding to support the capital build-out that'll take place over the next couple of years. But we do things like before and after school programming and summer camps for families and hot showers for anybody that's transitioning in or out of homelessness. And those hot showers come with case management. And we have choice-style food pantries inside the building that provide dignity back to the family. And so it's a great organization. The community is starting to come alive. We're doing outreach already there. And we're just so grateful that hopefully Baltimore County will come alongside us with the support of the capital.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Beth Miller.
Welcome, Ms. Miller.
My name is Beth Miller, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Green Towson Alliance, a Towson-based environmental group advocating for a greener, healthier, and more beautiful community. Green Towson Alliance is in conversation with Baltimore County to pursue a Chesapeake Bay Trust Green Streets, Green Jobs, Green Towns grant for green infrastructure projects in downtown Towson. The grant amount is $175,000, and matching funds improve the likelihood of a grant award. Baltimore County's 2024-2025 green infrastructure budget was $100,000, a pittance compared to other Maryland counties. I am asking for an increase to $300,000 in the next capital budget to provide matching funds for this green infrastructure grant. We see exciting opportunities to improve the green infrastructure in downtown Towson with specially-designed tree pits, crosswalks, or tree trenches that will capture and infiltrate stormwater. Upstream capture of stormwater keeps it out of the gray infrastructure systems, also known as stormwater pipes. This reduces pollution, both by filtering out toxins and by reducing erosion of stream banks caused by large volumes of stormwater. Green infrastructure projects simultaneously beautify, provide wildlife habitat, improve walkability, and enhance pedestrian safety. This, pardon me, I lost my place. This grant can be a pilot for new infrastructure standards. For instance, traffic calming projects that include bumpouts at crosswalks can incorporate stormwater retention basins that capture stormwater from the street rather than the current design that is completely impervious. This would add minimal cost to work that is already being done. We are experiencing the impact of climate change and more frequent and intense storms in our area. Green infrastructure will help build resilience for our communities. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tom Fekiti.
Welcome. Is he here?
I'm Tom Fekita, Chair of the Pikeville Revitalization Action Committee. Our program was defined in a revitalization plan adopted in 2021 and includes a broad range of items for the improvement of the central business district. Three months ago, we dedicated a new mural drawing on both Pikeville's past and present. We are currently working with the Planning Department on a second mural installation, as well as the feasibility of installing decorative sculptures along Rice Street and Road in selected locations. We propose that further such improvements would do much to brighten the business district and request an additional $150,000 placed in next year's budget. Excuse me. On Tuesday, we were joined by the County Executive and Council Chairman in opening the beautiful new Meadow Creek Pocket Park within a half mile of the business district. We strongly encourage similar developments and installation of a bicycle and walking trail connecting other similar parks. The trail is an action item in the revitalization plan. We strongly support similar requests by neighborhood associations such as Pine Ridge and Villanova. This is a multi-year project, and we urge that funds be allocated next year to begin planning and design. The critical issue we face in Pikeville is the need to address pedestrian safety along Rice Street and Road and other communities. Rice Street and Road needs a concerted effort to improve pedestrian safety. Sidewalks are full of severe trip hazards, failing ramps, as well as unstable pedestrian crossing areas. We believe that this effort must combine the collaborative efforts of the county and the state highway administration and should include consideration of both easy fixes, such as new and improved marking of pedestrian crossings, elevated crossings, and pedestrian safety islands. We look forward to working with you and our communities on this critical project. Thank you.
Thank you. You're right on time. Right on time.
Next up, we have Dave Conrad.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dave Conrad. I'm here representing the Bullies Quarters Improvement Association. I'm here to say to speak on behalf of Bullies Quarters. For the past several years, we've been working on advocating for transportation and safety improvements for the gateway to our community. Those of you familiar with Middle River know there are only two main arteries in and out of the area, Ebenezer Road and Maryland 150. And the county roadways that serve Maryland 150 and the ones going into are the ones that we're focused on as part of our project. In coordination with both DPWT and SHA, we've completed several traffic studies of the target area and identified transportation goals for both the state and county roadways. Currently, we have several of the recommended improvements set to be completed in the spring of 2025 for the upcoming capital budget for fiscal year 2026 through '31. We're asking for $300,000 to be earmarked for the continuation of our ongoing transportation and safety improvements and that these funds would be used to be forwarded, the recommended midterm and long-term goals that have been set forth by DPWT. Most of those improvements will focus on intersections, pedestrian safety, ADA compliance, sidewalk connectivity, similar to a lot of things that a lot of folks here have been already asking for. They're also looking to use some of these capital funds for the state's CTP to forward traffic, traffic impact study. So we've got state and county roadways tied together there. Some of those funds will come from the county. Some of those will come from the state. Lastly, I'd like to mention that the County Executive has included our, both the, our goals in both the DPWT budget for the past year or so and also were noted in the CTP priority letter to Maryland Department of Transportation for this area. I'll be providing a written comment to the Board with more detailed documentation, but I wanted to take the opportunity to see if you guys had any questions or if there's any additional information you would want to request as part of this request when we put it forward to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kristin Zaminski.
Welcome.
Great job on the last name. Yeah, it was very good. Hi, my name is Kristin Zaminski. I live in Pikeville, and I wear many hats. I'm in a lot of different groups. But I come to you on behalf of, as President of my community association, Colonial Village. We are one of the communities that face the Pikeville Armory, and we fully support this project and urge you to see the project through. We desperately need community meeting spaces, safe walking spaces, ability-inclusive playgrounds. I have a lot of friends that have disabled children that have, woodchips aren't cutting it. Green space, art space, recreation space, and youth and senior programming. This is going to be a transformative project for the entire area, and it's in a very densely urban populated area. It'll be, other communities have come to me. I'm close with a lot of the other presidents and the community associations. They're already calling me. We gotta set up community spaces because there's nothing to use. So I urge you to continue to support this project. It's going to be fantastic and really make Baltimore County a destination and a place to live in, to put down roots, and to continue and to make a family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jack Greenberg.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jack Greenberg. I'm Treasurer of the Pikeville Armory Foundation, and I'm not going to repeat what Kristin said, but she said it well. I'm here to ask the county for continued support of the Pikeville Armory project through the capital budget. The Armory project is a transformative project for our community, our county, and the value of the project must be recognized and addressed through the county's budget process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have David Ginsburg.
Welcome.
Izzy's our hype man tonight. So David Ginsburg, Executive Director, again with the Pikeville Armory Foundation. So I want to approach this body just a little bit different. First, I want to say thank you for all the funding we've gotten from the county and from the county executive. I want to say thank you to Izzy and the council, who has not only been huge supporters, but they had groundbreaking legislation this year to change zoning so that for the first time in Baltimore County, multipurpose can actually be done, supporting veterans, bringing in school programs, green space, fields, community center, that sort of thing. So I'm gonna start with a thank you. It's a $95 million project run by a nonprofit. It is very expensive to transform a community. It's easy to do a million here and a million there, but it's very difficult to truly make changes that will cause people to want to stay in a community, make people's homes worth more, create jobs. And we have future phases we're looking at to solve problems like affordable housing for homeless veterans and other problems that have been identified, talking to groups like I and the Weinberg Foundation and county officials. And so what I really ask is that the Planning Board and the county try to align with the capital budget and look at projects that take five or 10 years and consistent funding so that these things can really happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Susan Williams.
Welcome.
My name is Susan Williams, and I'm the co-president of the Pine Ridge Association. And I think you're hearing a lot of people from Pikeville talking tonight. We are very united with our commercial district, with the Armory, and with at least 14 community groups, all working on the same mission, which is to implement the master plans, including the great work the Planning Department did on 2030 and the retro fare areas. We are all in on that. Bikes and Peds and our 2021 plan for our community. So this, my community association is supporting the planning efforts with our chairman, Tom Fekita, for the commercial revitalization. I think it's really, really important to support, and we are looking more to the state because it's a state road, improvements to Rice Street and Road, not only to balance it being a thruway, but also the needs of the merchants, as well as needs of pedestrians. We have a very large walking community in general. We also have a very large Orthodox, Orthodox population that walks. That gets us to supporting Chaz Ezren's comments about needing sidewalks because the streets in these areas have gotten busier over time, and people are walking. Then another one is in terms of the Gwynn Falls Trail. We think this is a great idea. We think it'll be totally unique, having a trail that roughly parallels a metro line. And we'd like to suggest that an easy project that wouldn't cost as much would be to take a portion of the trail from the Old Court Road Station under the bridge to Sudbrook Road. It's relatively flat. The most expensive part would be the switchbacks up to the thing, but it would be an easy thing to do. And I'd like to make an aside, and this is to support implementation of the master plans with every project that's done. I have watched Hidden Waters on Old Court Road, and I've watched a new bank go in at Rice Street and Road and Hooks Lane with no sidewalk. That's crazy.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We appreciate it.
Next up, we have Catherine Dries.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Catherine Dries, and I'm here representing the Ruckston-Rutterwood Lake Roland Area Improvement Association, which is about 3,000 households. I'd like to bring your attention to three separate issues. The first of which is West Joppa Road from Bellona Avenue to Thornton Road. This is an area that needs to be redesigned and reconfigured. A traffic study will show that the current configuration is not suitable to carry heavy traffic loads in any reasonable manner. Funds need to be allocated to improve traffic flow and pedestrian safety. Secondly, we would like funding to be put toward improvements at Charles Street and Stevenson Lane. Baltimore County and State Highway Administration could provide crosswalks and additional sidewalks at the intersection of Charles Street and Stevenson Lane. This would enable pedestrian crossing safely of Charles Street and also give access to Lake Roland. This is in our community plan, as submitted and approved by the Planning Board, and was also included in the 2030 master plan by the County Council. We request that this Planning Board take the responsibility in ensuring success with this specific issue. Lastly, I'd like to draw your attention to flooding along Ruckston Road and Circle Road, which is a recurring issue with any high-volume rain event. Specifically upstream along Roland Run, this area has required fast water rescue of three people on two separate occasions over the past year. We would ask that existing planning for stormwater management and for all future development in stormwater retention within the lake, within the Roland Run watershed be updated to the latest best practices to mitigate the flooding occurring in our community and the capital be allocated for the stormwater management projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Caitlin Clem Kelner.
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Caitlin Clem Kelner, and I am President of the Lenovover Improvement Association, which represents 1,400 households in the sixth district in the overly Fullerton area. I'm here to talk to you tonight about three issues that we are requesting help with. One of those is the amount of water main breaks that we are having within the Lenovover community. Just this year alone, we've had three on Fullerton Heights Avenue, one on Eleanor, Marion, Lyndale, and two at Kenwood and Lilian Holt Drive. One of these caused one resident over $10,000 in damages to their home. It's funny, this meeting is actually a week out from the 20th anniversary of when over 1,600 households had a water main issue. And we are waiting for that to happen again. No community should be having the amount of water main breaks that we are having. Another issue is the lack of sidewalks and improvements to lighting within our area. By Baltimore County's own definition of a school zone, we, the bulk of our community is located within that. It is not okay for students, seniors, or people using mobility devices to have to ride or walk in the middle of a road. Lastly, we want to draw your attention to Fullerton Elementary School. That is one of the few open concept schools left in this state. And as a school that just went into a lock-in within the past two weeks, it was in the red on my I-Pass for safety. We need improvements to Fullerton. I know that people don't really think about Fullerton as a school with issues, but I am here to tell you that it is the exact same way as when I graduated in 2000, and I'm 35. We need the improvements to there. It also was in the red on my I-Pass for pedestrian safety as well. There's more in a letter that we have that will be distributed to you all, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Melvin. Next up, we have Melvin Mintz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mel Mintz. I come here tonight as a private citizen, long decades involved in the effort to enhance the sustainability of my hometown, Pikesville. I urge you to support Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan Committee's support, in particular for their $150,000 fund request for public murals and art in the commercial revitalization district. Pikesville, as you know, is an older, challenged commercial district. If challenges are not addressed, the nearby residential values are affected. That is why Councilman Patoka sponsored the Pikesville Revitalization Plan Legislation, of which I am proud to have contributed to its drafting. Wisely artwork among many actions the plan has called for a number of times, not the least of which, of course, is the wonderful redevelopment of the Pikesville Armory. The rationale for such legislation and the inclusion in the plan is because there are only four ways to enhance the sustainability of older, challenged, commercial areas. They are waterfront, artwork, pedestrian friendliness, and housing. Pikesville doesn't have waterfront. That is why the councilman offered this comprehensive plan that included so much artwork. That is why County Executive Osheski has been a true hero in facilitating the assistance of funding, along with active engagement by his administration, by the Economic Development Commission, the Department of Public Works, the police, and the Department of Housing and Community Development. He and they are owed a debt of gratitude by our community. I urge inclusion of all these funds. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nick Stewart.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nick Stewart. I'm speaking on behalf of an advocacy group called We the People, Baltimore County, which is a good governance group that focuses on revitalization, on housing, smart growth. And so you've heard it tonight from Ms. Williams, that now is a time to focus on master plan implementation. There have been major efforts to bring us to this point, master plan process, CZMP. Despite our issues with that process, we believe that now is the time to be laser-focused, that this can be our year to implement a master plan in a way that we have not in the past. It's an, oftentimes, an aspirational document that we put on a shelf. We can make it much more than that, and we can do it this year. And so we believe that we actually need to focus on accommodating particularly the nodes and the infrastructure contemplated by the nodes in order to facilitate redevelopment. Most of the nodes are located in aging radial corridors, and so their infrastructure is aging. So there are two issues to focus on tonight. There's a third that's going to be raised by my colleague, Marsha, as well. The first is adequacy of schools and sewers and roads are all critical, and we have a lot of them. And so priorities need to be set. So we ask you tonight if you will focus on the short and mid and long-term potential for node redevelopment and use that in order to make recommendations on a short, a mid, and long-term basis. This is what Mr. Ginsburg was getting to tonight. We've got to focus on our priorities, and we have to stay focused on our priorities and not let them shift. We have a way to do this, and we need the predictability and sustainability that that brings. The second piece is master plan conformance. The master plan is intended to guide these decisions and priorities related to development decisions and a whole bunch of programmatic decisions, but each agency making our capital requests, they should propose or discuss how their proposal is consistent with the master plan and how we can use it to implement the master plan. And if they don't do that, we need to understand why.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Marsha McLalon.
I'm Marsha McLalon, and I am following up on Nick's presentation, also in support of We the People's testimony, which I believe you have or will be given. And I'm here really to talk about funding. There are so many nodes that need redevelopment, so many existing communities that need projects, and there's never going to be sufficient funding. And one of the main things that we really need to do is look at how other jurisdictions are finding the funding. Baltimore County has a history of granting waivers to adequate public facility impact fees, and therefore collects very little money from new development or redevelopment projects. In fiscal year '21 and '22, there were no impact fees collected at all. They were all waived. Last year, the impact fees were waived for 666 out of 687 residential and commercial building permits. We need the money. This doesn't work. And if you look at what surrounding jurisdictions are doing, Anarundale, Howard, Harford, Montgomery, other central Maryland jurisdictions are all raising a significant amount of money from adequate public facilities, impact fees, and excise taxes. This has not deterred developers from doing construction in those counties. I know the development community doesn't want to pay anymore, but it's going to help them do projects if the infrastructure capacity and the improvements to schools and other facilities that attract people are in place. Therefore, we strongly recommend that the planning board ask staff to reach out to neighboring jurisdictions regarding how they generate revenue through adequate public facilities mechanisms, whether it's excise taxes, impact fees, or others, to try and figure out which are the most successful for them. Baltimore County is going to need significant revenue for adequate infrastructure and facilities to complete or to initiate even redevelopment as envisioned in the master plan nodes. Successful redevelopment will eventually generate a lot of revenue for the county through property taxes, increased income taxes, and sales taxes, but it's going to take time for that revenue to be produced. So in the interim, we need to look at other jurisdictions and find out how they're finding the money for the capacity for infrastructure to allow redevelopment to move forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two more speakers. Next up, we have Councilman Patoka.
Welcome, Councilman Patoka.
So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the board members. My name is Izzy Patoka, and I'm chairman of the Baltimore County Council, and I also represent the beautiful 2nd District of Baltimore County. And I want to provide some observations and make some recommendations, some that are county-wide and some that are pertinent to the 2nd District. In terms of countywide, in the recently adopted master plan 2030, it calls for greater predictability and specificity in the six-year program. Adhering to a plan will minimize surprise projects and allow for the county to achieve greater continuity in the budget process. You've heard a couple of speakers like Mr. Ginsburg talk about putting projects, not only squeezing them just in the budget year, but phasing them over the six-year plan. It's okay to put projects out in six, they move up to five, to four, to three, to two, and then in the budget year, and that they be specific, not in bulk programs. We've had a history of just putting everything in a bulk account, and then when the budget year comes, we then make decisions, but I think we can do it ahead of that. Let me just talk about, on the capital side, the capital budget is agency-driven, and it's data-driven, and those are good concepts, except that the data-driven component of it has to weave in community sentiment. Otherwise, we're hailing to the data and ignoring our communities. A council member like me, we're at community meetings every night of the week, and so we gain some level of community sentiment, where in many cases, the closest touch that a county, a community member may have to the county government. So let me just focus in on the 2nd District. I know I'm running out of time, so I'm going to go through some of the projects. Our recreational needs are immense. We need a regional park on the west side of the district. We need a greenway that goes from Huntington to Villanova, to Silver Creek Park, to Sudbrook Park, to Bedford Park. I think you've heard some of the earlier speakers speak of this. Also in recreation, Mr. Smith, we need a continued investment in the Pikesville Armory that can be in every year of the budget. We need a standalone rec center in Pikesville. The Woodlawn Center needs renovation. In terms of POS, love to have a regional park in the area. We do not have any. We have lots of, we have an enormous amount of private rec, but very little public rec in the area. POS opportunities, 7003 Sedgmore Road near the Woodmore Shopping Center, 1620 Reisterstown Road and back of St. Mark's on the hill, our inner Beltway Commercial Corridors. Woodlawn Village is in need of, that should be in every year of the budget. The Reisterstown Road inner commercial corridor is in need of improvement. You've heard many speakers speak of that tonight. Street repaving, DPWT, the Palhatten Streets. The poor Palhatten Streets are requested year after year. Kellogg's Road, Norvo Road, Retlaw Road, Robin Hill Road, Tulsa Road, Pembroke Road, Fieldview, Green Tree Road from Hooks Lane to Craddock, Burnley Road, Evan Way, utilities. Lake Roland Sewage, we have an undersized interceptor beneath Lake Roland that needs to be tended to. Our Dum Barton Storm Drains, Circle Road Drainage, you heard Ms. Dries speak about that. Sidewalks, Pikesville, Villanova, Sudbrook Park, and then I'm just going to put this as a tick, I know I'm over time, but thank you for doing this. In the operating budget, we need speed cameras, and we need our state legislators to, yeah, that does. So our state legislators need to enable the county to add additional speed cameras. We don't have the authority to do it. It's failed the last two sessions. If that passes this year, we'll have a capital need for speed cameras. And I think, Mr. IT, that the speed camera could be considered a capital item.
Thank you, Councilman Patoka. It's only for you, Izzy, that I give you more time.
And let me just make one final sentence. If you don't see these agency, and the agency requests, I would ask that they be included in the planning board's recommendations. So if you don't see it from these folks, take the initiative to include them. Thank you very much. And a shout-out to Howard Perlow on his, 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 his work on the planning board, and also Mark Heckman. Thank you all. And you too, Madam Chair, and all of you.
Thank you.
To Taylor.
Thanks, Councilman Patoka. Next up, we have Phyllis Chorus. And she's our last speaker for the evening.
Good evening, planning board. I don't like coming behind Izzy, but I am going to keep it under two minutes. My name is Phyllis Chorus. I'm the executive director of Neighbor Space of Baltimore County. We are a nonprofit land trust dedicated to enhancing the livability of communities inside the Urteil, and we do that by protecting, restoring, and stewarding public green spaces. You may know that Neighbor Space is written into county code to receive 20% of the annual local open space waiver fees collected. I'm sure you know that that amount varies significantly from year to year, which makes it rather difficult for me to budget and to ensure that our programs are consistently rolled out. I would like to thank the county executive, who I know isn't here tonight, but he has committed to stabilizing that amount at $100,000 for the next five years as reflected in the capital budget. That has already, in the past two years, that level of support has been tremendously helpful in helping us grow, and we are now able to better serve our current communities. We are ready now to take the next step and start proactively providing green space in the neighborhoods with the greatest need. It's highlighted in the county's master plan 2030 and in the 2022 LPPRP that residents really want green and walkable neighborhoods. On the other hand, we all know that current park space is inequitably distributed and that we are rapidly running out of undeveloped land inside the Urteil. The master plan presents targeted retrofitting as the solution to creating livable communities. In the past 20 years, Neighbor Space has become an expert at retrofitting pocket parks into the county's older suburbs, and we use a community-centered approach to do that. In order to ensure that we do this in an equitable manner going forward, we need to actively target areas of need. I can tell you that that proactive approach is going to require a significant investment of staff time in community outreach, engagement, and education. Those are absolutely essential activities, and those can be difficult to fund through external grant programs. So I'm respectfully asking that the county continue, or if possible, increase its level of support of Neighbor Space in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bensley, are there any more speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay. Then that, oh, Ms. Wolfson?
If I may.
Well, before, before we do that, I just want to say, so that concludes our speaker list for this evening.
I was going to speak.
No, I was going to ask for board comments in a minute. Yeah. So we're just gonna, that's just gonna end the speaker registration list, but obviously I am going to open it up to the board to see if there's any questions or comments before we conclude for the evening. So Ms. Wolfson?
And I do apologize. I'm not renowned for my patience. But I do want to speak for a couple of issues in District 4. First of all, I wanted to thank Wreckin Parks. The Diamond Ridge Park is exquisite. You did a fabulous job. It's over the top. No plastic, it's beautiful, and I really appreciate that. A couple of things with the tech. There are so many page-not-found's on the Baltimore County website. It's nearly unusable, unusable. Page after page, page-not-found, page-not-found. I don't know if I'm looking for stuff that nobody else is looking for, but it's a lot of dead links in there, so thank you. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. And Davis Avenue on the west side in the Woodstock area is totally falling apart. That it's going to have to do complete renovation, dig up, replace, and it's a danger that the bottom of Davis Avenue, Wrights Mill Road, it is so silted, and it's within, say, 40 feet of Bryce Run, and that really, really needs to be fixed in that area. The STEAM project in Randalls Town, I don't know what's happening with that, but if they can't do it for environmental reasons, those funds should be redirected to a better use for Baltimore County.
They should be redirected towards the 8212 project on Liberty Road.
To what?
The 8212 project on Liberty Road.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The libraries, we love our library. Thank you. And our community college.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our citizen input meeting. As a reminder, our next board meeting will be on November 7th of 2024, and the meeting will be in person, just for all of the speakers that spoke tonight. If you ran out of time, if you want to give Ms. Bensley any of your notes for the board to review, we'll definitely take those into consideration. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
I was more like, I gotta like end that part before we can talk.
Be patient, be patient.
I'm like, stop it.
I'm not patient.